On M29, and he must have been booking it, like, uh, real fast.
Uh, a woman thought there was a-
Real fast, and I was like-
Oh, it's four o'clock, I'll tell you. Four o'clock, oh, I'd like to call the meeting to order if... Yep, four o'clock. May have a roll call, please. Okay. Could you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may have a roll call, please.
Mr. Smasco?
Present.
Mr. Baldwin?
Here.
Mr. Beeden?
Present.
Mr. Trello?
Here.
Mr. Rushing?
Here.
Mr. Vandabosh?
Mr. Bo.
Okay, we have a quorum, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
At this time, I would move to add County Prosecutor Michael Wendling on the agenda for an update for his office. As item number, it would be 14A miscellaneous business.
Do I have a support?
I'll support.
I have a motion and support, any questions or comments?
Just that Mike's been before us before, and I know he asked me placed on, wasn't for some reason on the agenda. I thought he should be able to at least speak his mind about whatever concerns he has. And I told him I would move to have him added so he could make a, an office update, I'm assuming similar to the one or two he has previously, and the email he sent to all commissioners and some of the other things. But I think he has a right to do that, and so I made the motion, vote it supported, and then, uh...
If I may request that that update happens after closed session, because I believe he is asking for a resolution to be approved for collective bargaining, so that item would be more appropriate after the closed session.
I explained to Mr. Wendling that he's not part of the Assembly. He has no basi- I explained to Mr. Wendling, and he agrees, he understands he's not part of this Assembly, would have no basis to make a motion, and no one would be making such a motion. And that's how I handled that, he just wants to say his piece again about, I think, his re- restructuring. And, and we're gonna talk in, in closed session, I know we've made some progress on some of that, so I just let him say his piece about the restructuring as he has before. He has no basis, no authority to make a motion, and I don't think any motion is forthcoming, so...
So it's just a presentation, essentially?
Just an update, just like the last one, I'm assuming.
We have a motion support, yes, sir?
Yeah, I got motion support, and I agree with that. Carrie, if you have concerns, once he addresses the board, then we can address that concern at that time.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay. Approve of the agenda as amended.
I'll make motion to accept the amended agenda.
I'm support. Support. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item six, minutes of previous meeting.
I believe that's in my packet, which I shall open as we speak. Yes, at this time, I would move to approve the filing of the minutes of the 7/25/24 Commission meeting, and the 8/01/24 Standing Committee meetings.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Motion support, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item seven, proclamations.
This time, I move to approve the proclamation proclaiming September 18th as Medal of Honor Private First Class Dwayne T. Williams Day.
Support. I have a motion support, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, Commissioner Rushing, would you like to read the proclamation?
Yeah, we saw the, I saw the proclamation, of course, read it, and he served there at the same time that my father was there, so I want to read this proclamation in its entirety for him serving our country. Proclaiming September 18th as Medal of Honor Private First Class Dwayne T. Williams Day, whereas Dwayne T. Williams, the son of Howard and Rose Mary Williams, was born on September 18th, 1949, in Brown City, Satelack County, Michigan. And whereas Dwayne Williams attended Bell Elementary School, St. Clair Elementary, Intermediate and High School in St. Clair, and K-PAC High School in K-PAC, Michigan. And whereas on December 18th, 1967, Dwayne enlisted in the Marine Corps Reserve, went into active Marine Corps on January 2nd, 1968, completed military training in May, 1968, promoted to Private First Class on June 1st, 1968, and deployed to Vietnam later that same month. And whereas on the night of September 18th, 1968, Private First Class Williams and the patrol he was with were attacked from ambush. An enemy grenade had landed close to where an already severely wounded Williams was lying, and without hesitation, in a valiant act of heroism, he rolled on top of the grade and exploded, saving the other members of his patrol from serious injury and possible loss of lives, enabling them to successfully defeat the attackers and hold their position until assistance arrived. And whereas, Private First Class Williams awards and honor include the Medal of Honor, Purple Heart, National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, and two Bronze Stars, and the Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal. USNSPFC, Dwayne T. Williams, a military ship, is named after Williams. The portion of Hawaii Highway I-69, beginning at the eastern city limit of the city of LaPirre and extending east to the western city limit of the city of Port Huron is known as Dwayne T. Williams Memorial Highway. His name can be found inscribed on the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. Now therefore be proclaimed, St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to hereby proclaim September 18th as Medal of Honor Private First Class Dwayne T. Williams Day in honor of his personal heroism, devotion to duty, and ultimately for gallantly giving his life for his country. Proclaim this 15th day of August, 15th of August, 2024, and sign by all the commissioners.
Thank you. Item eight, consent agenda.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve items A8 through AG on the consent agenda.
Do I have support? Support?
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item nine, reports of standing and special committees, Commissioner Rushing.
I do have one, I met with the, which I do, I go to lots of township meetings, I met with the Wales Township Board, and we did approve the $45,000 in regards to the Mill River Road, working in partnership with the city of Memphis, Riley Township, and Wales Township, that this serves the residents, and they did approve last night that their board member to use the finances for that section of road. So appreciated that they're contributing to their neighbors and not getting this project done. The road has been in very disrepair for over three decades. And this is a terrible piece of road, but it's gonna get a complete upgrade, and it should be done before the second week of September.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Smasco?
Yes. That was a vote, I'm sorry.
Would you, I mean, you can, but we don't have-
No, no.
Would you have a report of a standing committee or anything you'd like to share?
I will do that, Parks and Rec, on the Parks and Rec agenda, you know, the Parks and Rec millage was, did not pass, and there was some discussion about that. Some discussion about perhaps, you know, getting another shot at that in November. I surveyed the board members, and people were susceptible to that concept, but really, you know, wanted to discuss it. I don't think the park board's gonna take that position, I think we talked about it, and I think they'll take a different approach to it and not put it back on November. I thought that was good. There's, there may be some things like out county user fees, like we did with the Fort Gresham Park, you know, to try and get some revenues in, because they were trying to get a maintenance millage so they could do some other things, because the parks are getting so large, and there's so much maintenance on that. These staff, Dennis's staff is, you know, he's got a limited staff out there, and there's a lot of issues with that, so there are some things they can look at. There's other issues such as, you know, that millage actually didn't pass pretty much countywide. Historically, it had been 70% in favor, and this was under 50% across the board, pretty much. And I don't think it was an indication they don't support, like, the park's regular millage, but when it said additional millage, I think people just checked no. And so it may slow down, like, the park downriver. There was, there wasn't a single community downriver, I think, that voted for the park's additional millage. Some of that money would have allowed that to proceed a little faster, so it'll probably slow down some of the development of some of the newest park, and some of that. But I think that the park is gonna take a look at that, and they're doing a great job. People like the services, they like the facilities, and they just have to move forward with it, so... That was, I removed my yes vote on the thing that wasn't present.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Commissioner Trello?
Oh, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Beeden?
Nothing this evening.
Thanks, I have none this evening as well. Item 11, unfinished business. You skipped your 10, skip 10. Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. Eileen Tesh.
Thank you. I know I only have three minutes, so I'll cover three subjects very quickly. First of all, I wasn't here the last time Prosecutor Mike Wendling spoke, but as you're well aware, there's much dissension in the community regarding Matthew Mason, three-and-a-half-year-old little boy that was murdered, beaten to death in his home six years ago. The only people that were in the home was the mother and the boyfriend, not the father of the child. Mother failed the polygraph, father, boyfriend lawyered up, and six years later, we still have no charges. Next, the Elginak Brownfield Development. We were here about a month ago, I know it's on the agenda. Again, my concern is the 24 years, it's a private entity. You've got 52 homes on 19 acres, and when I asked the city council members where to get the 24 years, they, the one I spoke to said, "That's what the developer proposed." And I understand maybe the developer is here tonight, because we overheard him in the hallway saying, "You don't know what you're talking about, you need to get educated." Well, the city council of Elginak isn't educated, and they voted for this. And finally, election, talking about election integrity. I am the vice chair of the St. Clair County Republicans and co-chair of the Election Integrity. Just wanted to bring you to your attention, that smart medic who is also the developer of an election voting machines, was the CEO and president, were just indicted in the Philippines, and it comes all the way here to the U.S., and they are working closely. They're in partnership with Dominion. So we need to get rid of these machines, thank you.
Thank you. Joe Green? Joe Green?
I live on 915 Mill Street in Elginak. I'm adjacent to the Brownsville project that's being put in. Supposedly, we're gonna get more information about it, hopefully. That way I can know what's going on, because the property that we own, we're gonna have 11 neighbors, all down the one side of us, possibly 12, because there's one more vacant lot. There's easements on the diagram and all that, and I was wondering if it's gonna wind up in our property, how it's gonna deal with it, where the power's gonna come through? Is it coming, come through the backs of the houses? I went to Elginak, and they said nothing was approved. And then finally, I did get a map, but I still don't even know if this has been approved. It's just a draft. I know they're gonna have a meeting at Elginak on August 26th. I will be at that to find out what's going on. I am kinda concerned about it. And we've got the cart right, cart right drainage that is in the back of the properties, Matt, there too. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Conkle?
Thank you, I'm from Parsons Island. I was at a event last evening, and I became aware of some projects that are going to be going on in Elginak, building new homes in, I think, affordable housing. I don't know if it's been approved or not, but I'm wondering what the impact will be on our water systems, and if anybody has taken, which I understand are at capacity or overcapacity, and if there's been any plans to improve the systems or modify them or whatever. Anyway, that's my concern.
Thank you. Terry Jones?
I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for letting me speak tonight. I also had concerns, I'm a resident of Elginak, I'm also the precinct delegate for Elginak. I have concerns about the Brownsville plan. My property butts right up against it, so, of course, all of the stuff that's been going on, we've been, you know, I had to put up with as far as, like, the early morning, you know, construction, 7:00 a.m., the fires that have been burning back there, which, you know, at night, we're watching back there, there's, there's one on fire. We've called the fire department, and nobody's answered it. So we had concerns about that. City Council supposedly has approved this, and not really notified the citizens of Elginak. They haven't been very transparent about this. The thing is, is that what they want to do back there with this Brownville plan, basically what I'm seeing is basically legalized theft. They want the citizens to pay for this stuff when it's their property. They want to build back there, let them pay for it. Not the citizens of Elginak should not have to pull money out of their pocket. Now I'm hearing they're talking about that if a millage has been passed, they can actually dip into that millage. So this is the concerns that the people of Elginak, the residents of Elginak, should not have to pay for this. They want to build back there, that's their property. I look back there, I still don't know how we're gonna get 52 offices back there. So this is the concerns that the people of Elginak have, that they don't want to have to pay for this out of their pocket. And like I said, I think this is nothing but legalized stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Jones?
Hi, I'm Kathy Jones, and our property is right up against it. My big thing that I have in common was when I read the Times Herald, and it said in there that they could tap in on the millages. I'm just wondering if the citizens of Elginak would vote for another millage if they knew that any contractor, if they needed money for, well, housing, the lights, the sewer, the landscaping, whatever, we're gonna pay for it. I don't think they'd vote yes again. I think, you know, we fought at the time when they were gonna build that, they changed the zoning to put more houses in. We didn't like it, it's true, we fought that. It was way too many, we let it go. But now it's back in our lap where we're paying for part of this, and I don't think that's right. So I would really like it if the city council of Elginak would look into it further, that all of you would look into this, because if they want to build, like Terry said, let them, let them pay for it. I don't feel that it's justified that as a taxpayer, we should be paying anything. And if that's true, me as a taxpayer, I want to dip in on that, because we would like to be able to redo our garage. We can't afford to do it. We wait, and we save to build, and they should do the same. I don't think it's right, I don't think it's fair across the board. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Linda Stansbury?
Hello, I'm here, I'm Linda Stansbury, and I, my house is right across the street from the Brownsville plan. I am against the plan going through. I wish you could take it off, Matt Table, just take it off, because the residents have not been notified. The residents know nothing about that, and you want to take the money out of our pockets, where we're struggling to, you know, keep our houses up, we're struggling to pay our mortgages, and, and like Kathy says, you know, we save, and we build what we can afford, and that's what they should do as well, thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Smith?
Hi, I'm Cindy Smith, I'm also a resident of Elginak. I do live right across the street from where they proposed to put this Brownsville plan. I'm also the president of the Elginak Housing Commission. When I saw in the newspaper all the monies that they're asking for to go towards this Brownville plan, they're asking for money for landscaping and sidewalks. That's typically been on the homeowner, so why are they putting it on all the taxpayers to have to be paying for all this? And for 24 years, not getting, the city not getting any income to support that development there. I don't think it's right for the rest of the citizens of Elginak for that. And when it comes to the millages, we have several council members that I've spoken to that don't quite fully understand that, and they're thinking they can't tap the millage money. But in fact, according to the newspaper article, they can tap, tap the millages for the seniors, county drug task force, library, parks, EMS, and St. Clair Community College. And like the one just didn't pass for parks, I'm not voting for any millage if they're gonna be able to take all this money, and then they're gonna come ask the rest of the county to pay for more money since they're getting all of it. I don't think it's right, just because the state opened this up for them to use it for housing, I don't think it's a good thing for us. And we're setting a precedent, precedent, for the rest of the towns. If we start doing this, everybody's gonna be hurting, and you guys, you know, everybody's gonna be coming to us asking for more money to support everything else, because they're gonna have to support these developments. And like I said again, we have council members that they voted for this, but they don't fully understand it, and they're second guessing what they voted for. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Felix? Robert Felix?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Robert Felix, St. Clair County Commissioner-elect for the 5th District. I'm here to speak on the landfill, but first, this Brownville plan. I live 20 miles away from Elginak, I do not abut the property. I hear the cries of the citizens that do live there. This is a bad idea on so many fronts, taking millage, opening up this avenue. This is gonna spread through the county like a wildfire, much like the solar cell and the generate, wind generators. This is opening the door to something that we don't necessarily want, and these residents shouldn't have to pay for. It's a bad idea, it should be closed out and put in the trash at the landfill. I want to address this board on something different, and thank you for the efforts that you have made, along with Eagle, the landfill, to correct the pollution we have experienced in the communities of Smiths Creek and Kimball. We are in a vastly different place than we were last year at this time, when we were unable to enjoy our property, in many cases, our homes, as the hydrogen sulfide odors permeated inside them, even with windows closed. Now, we can debate the merits of the experimental subbage bioreactor that the state issued the permit for many years back, and discuss if it was a good idea or not to do this experiment near a populated area, rural as it might have seemed at the time. But for now, let's focus on the work remaining. We have a problem with the landfill leachate and the PFAS and the leachate. The regulations stopping delivery of PFAS-laden leachate to the wastewater treatment plants are looming on the horizon. Residents are still reporting potential H2S odors from the leachate lagoons at the airport and from the landfill that needs to be investigated. And there is ongoing groundwater contamination issues that are concerns to citizens at both the landfill and the airport lagoons. I'm asking this board to consider and fund well-watered testing for contaminants, and specifically PFAS, for residents located a set distance from the landfill or leachate lagoons. Limited residential water testing was discussed in December of 2023, but I'm hearing from several residents that they have a concern of not receiving testing. I wish I had a magic wand and could fix this all overnight, but I can't, no one can, not overnight. These are serious issues that are going to require real work to address, not just Facebook posts and debate. Part of the reasons the voters elected me is to do just that, and I take that responsibility very seriously. So tonight, let's pause to appreciate how far we have come with the landfill issues, and how far we still have to go. In closing, let me thank the voters for putting their faith in me, and I want to tell them I'm ready to get to work. In fact, I'm already working on the landfill issues and other problems as allowed by law. I won't wait until January. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Julian Ruff?
Hold on to your hats, kidding. Tonight, I'm talking to everybody except you know who. There have been some that would accuse what I had to say at the last meeting as a breach of decorum. I don't know. On public record, from public office, saying that thousands upon thousands of residents of this community should hide who they are behind closed doors, feels like that's a much bigger breach of decorum than somebody coming here and calling that person a bigot. Now, that person was about to respond, and the person who stopped him from responding was smart in so doing so, because what, was he gonna apologize? He was gonna say the same things we heard him say during his homophobic tirade, which, to all your credit, you distanced yourself from and protested against the things he was saying. He just couldn't stop. So we gotta ask ourselves, where is the moral bottom? What could he have said and still be sitting there? At what point does he get voted off the board? There's a German saying, if nine people are seated at a table, and a Nazi joins them, and nobody protests, there are 10 Nazis at that table. I think the Germans know a thing or two about Nazis, right? It's all fine and good to slap him on the wrist in the moment, but so long as he sits here, that's a problem. Problem for the whole community to know that Target is a safer space than St. Clair County as a whole. Wasn't there a lady in Marysville who had some stuff to say a few years ago? Brought a lot of unnecessary attention to that community, popping off with stuff that is at least 50, 60 years outdated, if it ever allowed a date in the first place. I left for 20 years, I didn't miss much. A lot of that bigotry. I see a lot more Christian hate in this community than Christian love, a lot more. So he can hide behind that if he wants, but it doesn't wash with me.
Thank you. Vicki Blackburn?
So who would a dictator Trump deem to be nonproductive, unworthy, dangerous, or lustan? In this context, lustan may be interpreted by Trump and his remaining followers to be any of the following: one, people who decide not to do what he tells them to do; two, anyone who thinks the dishonest Supreme Court decision is so boring because it would give a dictator Trump supreme power when he is definitely not God and definitely not the voice of the people; three, anyone who values freedom and justice for all; four, civil servants who are professionals in their field and not appointed by a loyalty czar; five, handicapped people; six, women; seven, children; eight, anyone other than white people; nine, anyone who has the true faith of love and who calls him out on his charade; ten, people who have discernment and use fact-checking based on multiple and diverse information; eleven, people with a thirst to learn and to get a quality education; twelve, anyone speaking truth to power. What are American values? How do we justify voting for a culture of hate, fear, division, evil, judgment, and death? What do we have to gain from his pathology? What would Jesus say? What would Jesus do? The good news is that hope for our collective future is winning. A critical mass of people are excited about freedom and the message of prosperity and justice for all in these United States of America. Kamala Harris brings excitement, strength, tenacity, and prosecutorial skills. She welcomes conversations with people who have different ideas about issues. She wants us to be smarter and kinder. She knows every person is worthy. God gave us freedom of choice. Jesus preached love. We have a choice to stand up and speak out with moral courage. Democracy or dictator? Power of Trump or the power of justice for all? We can create the beloved community together and we can also be respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Conlin?
Mary Conlin. I own property in Birchville and in Grant Township and I want to speak towards parking wrecks and taxes. You guys, you're killing me with your taxes. We had a vote and we said no. If a kid comes to you and says, hey, bingai, and you say no, do you want that kid coming back to you again and asking you again only to say no? We said no on parks and wrecks. We don't need any more taxes. And then you have this Brownfield thing and you're going to have to draw taxes from all over the places to fill, fulfill Brownfield? I believe we need to tighten our belts. I believe we're setting our, our country's getting set up for a crash. We need to tighten up. We don't need to be spreading everything thinner. I am not in agreement with parks and wrecks going on the November ballot. You put it early, the early vote, you put it in the August vote just so you can get the teachers, if it's something to do with the teachers in the school, so you can get the minority to go out and slam it and vote for it. Now you want to push it through on us again? We said no once. Don't make us say no twice. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat? Pat, yep, thank you. Pat from Elginak.
Hi, sorry for the sloppy writing there, but I'm actually from Elginak also. I do not live by the, I live about five miles from the Brownfield project that's supposed to go on. And, but I live on the main road and I've been following closely the, the infrastructure issues with the water because the port here on Water Authority has already been on Elginak and they basically washed their hands of, they're overdischarging. So how can we support 55 more homes? Plus, now I see Brad the other night that they're going to put another, I believe, 25 homes in our community center. Our infrastructure needs to be fixed first before any building goes on there. I live by the water. I've noticed the water changes. I've lived in Elginak for 20 years. My taxes are almost doubled in the last six years and I'm like, where, where are we not asking these people to, we're giving them a hand and saying, here, you can do it all for free and your taxpayers are going to pick up all the costs and we're not benefiting from that building at all? I don't understand why anybody could agree with that. I mean, that's just putting a tax burden on our county that's already, on a major tax burden already. So, and then you go in to bring the water, which we all, the blue water community, which is a very big resource to all of us from the start to the bottom and you're going to, you start screwing that up, what are you doing to all of us? You need fresh water to drink. You know, it's, it's simplistic, so do the right thing.
Thank you.
Common sense.
There are no other citizens wishing to address the board this evening. Item 11, unfinished business. So there's been a lot of discussion on this. Clearly, there's still a lot of confusion, certain parts, certain pieces of the concerns that we've heard tonight don't have anything, aren't under the jurisdiction of this board. Those would be things that are handled by Elginak through their planning department, through their planning commission. You know, the, the concerns about infrastructure and things like that aren't before us. Commissioner Vannenbosh had actually two family emergencies, so he's not here tonight and he represents, this is part of his district. So he has asked that we take no action until more of these questions get answered. I think Elginak needs to be, it sounds like they have some questions that they need to be, have answered for themselves before they, is this something they really want to ask for? So on behalf of Commissioner Vannenbosh, I ask that we either take no action or remove it. Commissioner Masco?
You know, I've been, or a party to some of that discussion, you know, and I would move that we table 11, table, the tabled item 11A be removed from the agenda without action at this time. To be placed back on it anytime, no action on it, just removes it from the agenda. And previously, this came up back in committee in, I'm going to say July, I had a wedding, my last daughter's wedding, so I missed committee. I didn't see it until the full board meeting and then did what I could to get my feet under me on all this. And there is a lot of misinformation, disinformation, lack of information, and a lot of interest from the public in this. So I think it's really important. And the, and the other part is, you know, the Democratic legislature, the Democratic governor changed the Brownfield Act, which was typically distressed sites, industrial sites, blighted property, and now they've opened it up to housing needs. And I think there's two things that we need to really look at. Number one, there's, you know, lack of necessary information. I'd asked for the development agreement, told those, those in the past have always come later. That astonishes me that we would develop these Brownfield plans without things such as development agreements to look at. I think we need to do that differently. Lack of county policy to say like a deliberate thoughtful approach to how we're going to, or if we're going to get into that business, we're going to get into the housing finance business. This is subsidized housing for people that live in $300,000 houses. So it's not for veterans, it's not for homeless, it's, you know, I think it's just we have to look at it. And the unfortunate part is the legislature changes it, the people that put this forward are doing exactly what they should do. They're business people, they look at it and say, we could do this and so there's nothing wrong with approaching it. The City of Elginak, as our board chair pointed out, approved this. This first goes to City of Elginak. Their representative said thumbs up. Okay, it hits the Brownfield, it hits our county planning. Our, our planning people put that on the Brownfield agenda. It gets a thumbs up from them. Next thing you know, it's on an agenda here for a committee, or for a public hearing. And had it not been for some of the people's interest, it could have gotten passed and approved and just gone on its way. I think it really does need to be slowed down. There's a lot of issues we need to look at and talk about. Some of the issues such as the 24 years of the capture, total of over $5.5 million in tax capture, 2.47 million right from Elginak City operating. Do the citizens of Elginak know they're going to lose $2.4 million over the next 24 years from their operations? A million, over a million to the county? We have Mr. Wendling here looking for wages or structures for his people, you know, yet in over 24 years, you want to have a million dollars, you know, go away or go a different route. So I think we really need to look at that and at least, I'm always open to look at anything people want to put before the board, but I just want to make sure we really look at it close. And I think removing it from the table with no action, maybe not put it on till September, October, November, whenever we think we can do that. And I did call Jeff Donaldson today to ask him if the things I was looking for ever showed up and they hadn't. He's working with some other things and on it and he's doing things, but he's not ready to really, he's not here tonight either. So we, we can't take action on it tonight, so I agree with that. So that's my motion. If there's a second, I would hope we would approve that.
You have a second? First?
Uh.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion is second. Questions, comments?
I got, yeah, I got the comments. I have many concerns about this. One, now the motion is to table it or to remove?
To remove it from the table without action. Basically, it takes it off the agenda, so it's just keep rolling over on the agenda.
I got a couple of questions. Point of order on the initial motion that was made. Was this motion made to table it the first time or was it made to forward it to the full board and then we decided to table it?
I, I tabled the motion.
It was at full board. Passed committee and ended up in full board.
If my memory's correctly, you made the motion to forward it to the full board. We got a second. I don't know who did, we did the second, but then we tabled it after that, correct? The initial motion is the motion that we would take action on, wouldn't it?
No. I, I, motion, my motion, the only motion for this, was to table it.
Okay. What I would like to do, and I don't know if you can make your motion, but we do have county commissioners-elect present and this is a very important order. Anything we want to table is, I'd like to wait until the next board takes place in January so they can make the decisions. And I can respect Vannenbosh not being here tonight and tabling it, but to remove it, that does it too, but I wouldn't want it to have to be addressed until after the first year.
If I could, Dave, I think that's a good point. If someone were to bring this back and ask administration to put it on and it got put on, or if a commissioner moved to amend an agenda to put it on, we'd have discussion about that and say, you know, say maybe a point of all taken here, it's October issue, whatever, we have new commissioners coming on, maybe we want to kick it to look at that. So, but this has nothing to do with that. It just takes it, it just takes it off the agenda.
Putting my concerns out in a public format. And also, if you can, I don't know if the builder's here or not, they want to get any more information that they potentially could give us. We can go ahead and vote on this, but would it be reasonable to have them give us any more information they can?
Have who, Dave?
I do, oh, is the builder here? Yes, he is. So if they got information that we don't have, and I know you are concerned about information, if they could give us something that we don't already know that we can address as county commissioners, because we're not City Elginak, they get determined what they want to do, not us. We could say we want to squash this, but if they want to do it, they're going to go forward anyways without us.
Our senior planning director, Jeff Donaldson, told me at about 2:30 in the afternoon today that he's been gathering information from the developers and maybe from Fishbeck and some other people to present. And I know our board chair, who's not here, he's on vacation, had wanted to get some information and he was, they were getting information together, so I think that's coming. I don't know if that's...
I would think it would make sense to do a, a full presentation, especially if you'd like to not handle it till January. I don't know what you could get answered tonight that you'd want to carry forward to the...
See, and this also gives the people of City Elginak to go back in front of their board for a motion for reconsideration. If they think that something happened and they didn't know about it, they can go back there and make some noise and see if they can't fix it from that end if they're opposed to it or in favor of it, you know?
A lot of the concerns tonight have been very hyper-local to what's happening in the Elginak side, not necessarily this board, so I think it belongs there.
Unless I'm mistaken, I'm not aware of a single resident or citizen from that area or even the countywide like Mr. Felix brought up tonight. He doesn't support it and he's not in your district. I'm not aware of a single resident that has supported this Brownfield.
There was a fellow that came in the first meeting from Marine City that had a business he was all about. I forget his name, but...
Yep, so we do have a motion and a second on the table. Does anyone have any other?
And that is to remove it until...
Till it comes, until it reappears from someone's request.
Just so I understand.
Okay. Everybody good? Okay. Do you want to do a roll call?
Just both, first of all.
Both, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12, under new business, the 2023 UHY LLP audit presentation.
This time, 12G, right? Oh, 12.
Hey, 12A.
12A, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's all right. It's a presentation.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for having me here today to present the 2023 audit for the county. My name is Karen Shafik and I am the partner overseeing the audit from UHY. Just before I get into the presentation, I just want to thank Carrie, Dina, the entire administration team, as well as all the departments for all their cooperation and hard work that I know goes into preparing for the audit and all the cooperation during the audit time. We know it takes a lot and just want to say thank you. I'll go through a brief summary of the statements as the report is about 200 pages long. The first part of the financial section is the independent auditor's report. This really is the only part of the statements that is UHY's. You have an unmodified opinion as noted on pages one through four of the report and is the best you can have in what the county strives for each year. You did receive the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting in 2022 and that certificate is presented in the introductory section of the report and the 2023 report has been submitted for the award as well. We will primarily go through the general fund here today and we'll begin with the balance sheet on page 23 of the financial statements. Assets at the end of 2023 for the general fund were at $18,609,903. Liabilities were at $4,808,629. Deferred inflows were at $336,402 and your fund balance at the end of 2023 was $13,464,872. Next is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and your changes in fund balance. You can see really kind of the general fund on pages 26, 106, and 134 actually, but total revenues of the general fund on the budget basis were at $66,771,526. Total expenditures were $60,792,893 and your other financing sources and uses at a net were actually a use of $5,654,088. Giving you a change in your fund balance of your general fund on the budget basis of $324,545. There's also the budget incentive fund and the development revolving fund that are combined with the general fund in your financial report. And the budget incentive fund had an increase in fund balance of $149,186 for the year and your development revolving fund had a decrease of $37,944 for a net change in your fund balance of the general fund as a whole of an increase of $435,787. Next, we'll look at an analysis of your fund balance. So at the end of the year, there was almost $13.5 million. It is broken up into a couple different pots, if you will. Non-spendable fund balance of over $2.2 million was for long-term receivables and advances to components as well as prepaid. Committed fund balance is your budget incentive fund fund balance and that's a little over $1.4 million. And your unassigned fund balance was at $9,793,612 and that is about 14% of your expenditures and transfers out in 2023. A part of kind of our presentation packet as well, you also have a couple of letters that go with your, your report. There's a report on internal control as well as a management letter, which should be in your packet too. The next part of the presentation packet really is going through your other major governmental funds, both your balance sheet and then your statements of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And then a summary really of your non-major governmental funds for your statement of revenues, expenditures, and your changes in fund balance as well as a categorization and balance of each of those funds' fund balance on page four of the presentation packet anyway. This packet then really goes through some of the analysis of your enterprise funds at the bottom of page four and continuing on page five and then goes to your internal service fund. And then lastly, giving some detail of your fiduciary funds on page six. The remaining pages of the presentation packet are some graphs showing resources of revenue for your general fund, the functions of your expenditures on the following page. On page nine, we actually have a graph showing the balance of your fund balance over the last 10 years. And then on page 10 shows the levels of your revenues and expenditures over the last 10 years as well. The remaining pages of the presentation packet are some graphs showing your sources of revenue for your general fund, the functions of your expenditures on the following page. On page nine, we actually have a graph showing the balance of your fund balance over the last 10 years. And then on page 10, shows the levels of your revenues and expenditures over the last 10 years as well. I know that's really quick to go through information. There is a lot in here. Does anyone have questions or anything? I know it's really kind of just general fund. There's, there's a lot of other information to go through if you'd like.
Does anyone have any questions?
Here they count, Carrie. How's it look? Good? Carrie says it's good. I'm good.
Thank you very much. Item B, the approval of county dispersments for July 2024.
This time, I move to approve county dispersments for the month of July 2024 in the amount of $12,518,331.77.
Support. Thank you. Have a motion support. Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chairperson Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you. Item C, library board reappointment.
This time, I make a motion to reappoint Ms. Denise Brooks to the library board as District One representative for a five-year term expiring August 24th of 2029.
Thank you. Do I have a support?
Second.
Support. All those in favor? Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the 2023 interlocal agreement.
This time, I move to approve the 2023 interlocal agreement with Macomb County for the Homeland Security Program in the amount of $296,696.
Thank you. Do I have a support? Support. Motion support. Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
No.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chairperson Baldwin?
Yes. Motion carries. Item E, renewal of the agreement between St. Clair County and the City of St. Clair.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement for assessing services with the City of St. Clair for a term of 7/124 through 6/30/29, the amount of $357,575.
Support.
Have a motion support. Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chairperson Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Item F, Commissioner Vandembosh, District Seven ARPA project.
This time, I move to approve the Commissioner District Seven ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act project for repairs to a bike path and to convert tennis courts to pickleball courts for Chinatownship in the amount of $92,000.
Second.
Thank you. Motion support. Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chairperson Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Item G, Commissioner Smasco.
Move to approve Commissioner District One American Rescue Plan Act project for Brockway Township in the amount of $26,529.09 for building addition to their township hall.
Support. Motion support. Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chairperson Baldwin?
Yes, thank you. Item I?
I have, I have H.
H? I'm sorry, I already crossed it off. So we're in the, skip that one. I know, I got really excited. Item H, please.
At this time, I make a motion to approve the contract with Thomson Reuters for a subscription to Westlaw Proflex for a term of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2026 in the amount of $8,728.64.
Support. Have a motion support. Any questions or comments on H? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes. Still yes. Item I?
This time, I move to approve the Commissioner District Two American Rescue Plan Act sub-recipient agreement with Fort Grasset Township in the amount of $59,300 for engineering services.
Support. Do you have a motion support? Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Item J?
This time, I would move to approve Commissioner District One American Rescue Plan Act project with City of Yale in the amount of $123,053.29 to install a playground in Yale City Park.
Support. Have a motion support. Any questions or comments? May have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Smasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Trello?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 13, the administrator report.
Only a couple brief items this evening. Just a reminder that August 20th at 8:30 a.m. is the annual actuary meeting, so I encourage you all to attend, and that will be in the Don Dodge Auditorium. And the second item is, a while back, the board approved a feasibility study for animal control for a potential relocation to the day treatment building. The results of that study have come back. The evaluation shows that it's favorable and feasible, and plenty of area to go ahead with that conversion. So we would like to move forward with the next steps and do an RFP for an architect to begin the design process. That's all I have for this evening.
Carrie, could, could we have, may I say a few things? I talked to Matt about the landfill. There was some developments, and he was kind enough to show up. Would you mind giving us kind of an update, Matt, on some of the landfill progress? If that's okay with everybody else?
Sure.
Good evening, Commissioner. I've just got a, I'll update you on a few of the things we have going on that are notable. In July, the board approved a number of things for the landfill, one of which was a gas system project where we are redrilling a number of existing vertical gas wells and adding a few new ones. Just want to let you know that work is proceeding well. The contractor started earlier than on, than was scheduled. All of the vertical well drilling is completed as of last Saturday. We had installed 13 redrills and four new wells in the landfill. And the horizontal header piping that's going to connect all of those up to the system was started first thing Saturday morning, and they pretty much worked all weekend. The contractor's goal is to get the project completed by Labor Day, which would be about two weeks ahead of schedule. So that's not something I get to say very often, that a project is going to get done sooner than rather than later. When I was presenting the project last month, I don't know if I was clear enough about the whys and wherefores behind the project. The bulk of this work, particularly the redrills, are being done to ensure compliance with new state regulations for solid waste facilities that came out early this year. There was wide sweeping changes to gas extraction system rules, how you monitor, how you maintain gas wells in your gas systems. So the redrills are being done to comply with that new set of rules. Had we not had the odor issues we had last year and had to address, we would probably have recommended to do that work next year, just on the normal schedule. But because of our issues, because there was an opportunity with this project to drill some additional extraction wells to help our overall gas control situation, I recommended we did it this year. And I just wanted to clarify that from the board, that we are doing it this year just to be a bit more proactive and a bit more aggressive in pursuing what we need to pursue. Another item that the board approved last month was a foam fractionation pilot study with a company called ECT Two. Our leachate is pretreated right now at the landfill. Goes to open air lagoons at the Air Industrial Park, and from there goes into the local POTW, ultimately to Port Huron Wastewater Treatment Plant for final treatment. We have an industrial user permit with the City of Port Huron to accept our wastewater and have it treated. Up until recently, PFOS contaminants within our leachate and in the state in general were not a consideration. It's what is an emerging contaminant, and I know everyone has heard a lot about that over the last five years. We've been monitoring and studying our levels at different parts of the landfill and been tracking everything, excuse me, over time. And we've actually seen naturally a slow decline in total PFOS in our leachate stream over time. However, it's still quite significant, obviously. We're one of the highest contributors for PFOS loading to the wastewater treatment plant that there is in the county. We're not the only one, but we're certainly very significant. We are at the point now where the Port Huron Wastewater Treatment Plant has modified our industrial users permit and has put in a concentration limit for one particular PFOS compound. That's PFOS per fluoro octane sulfonic acid. And they've put a limit that we will be required to stay under as of next March of 130 parts per trillion. No other particular compounds did they say that we needed to meet certain levels, apparently. And I can only infer from, from that direction that everything else is being handled reasonably, and their effluent going into the St. Clair River is meeting standards. So that was our task to get working to, okay, how do we reduce that? So that was the reason and the impetus for me asking for that pilot study. We've identified foam fractionation as a simple, straightforward, very effective way of treating our wastewater for PFOS contamination. It's being used at a number of facilities across the country, particularly landfills and landfill leachate. It's quite effective by reducing, and it's been shown to reduce total PFOS compounds, and there's a huge family of these compounds, by over 95% on a very regular basis. So it's quite effective, and the pilot study is underway. We sent samples of our leachate, about 1,100 gallons of it, to their facility in Maine last week on a truck, and they have started that pilot study. The goal is to see, of that study is to see what treatment is needed and how aggressively it needs to be treated to get it down to the state of Michigan water quality values. It's Rule 57 that the state has established based on federal guidelines on levels of PFOS and other contaminants that are safe enough for human, for aquatic life, and all of that. So not necessarily to say that we would need to aggressively treat down to those levels, but that's the goal, to see what it would take, and we'll kind of go from there. So we hope to have results of that pilot study in about four to five weeks from now. We'll see how that goes. And once those are received, I hope to time that with a request, an RFP, to go out on the street for a foam fractionation build or treatment process to be installed at the landfill so that we can target the PFOS common, PFOS levels in our leachate. It would be advantageous to have the results of that pilot study in the RFP, so that's, that's really my goal and what we're going to work towards. One of the other items that the board approved last month was a study by the engineering consultant Tetra Tech to do a broader scope PFOS treatment evaluation. It's a comprehensive evaluation that's going to look at a multitude of different treatment options that could be utilized at the landfill for the county for this particular waste stream. That agreement has been signed. The contract's been set. I've started providing information to Tetra Tech on what they'll need to do their analysis. We are going to have a kickoff meeting before the end of the month with those folks and hope that it gives us a big picture, long-term view and recommendations for moving forward on what we could do, should do, see what they recommend. One of the things that Mr. Felix mentioned when he was up here is that the regulations aren't going to stay, and the rules aren't going to stay the way they are today. As time goes on, there will not only be other emerging contaminants, I'm sure, that will come out that will need to be regulated, but there may be a furthering of PFOS and particular compounds that are going to be regulated and effluent limits that will be lowered as time goes on. So we need to situate ourselves for the long term and be as good a shape as we can for the future. So that's one of the main goals of the Tetra Tech study. Just to, just to clarify, it's complementary to the pilot study we're doing specifically for foam fractionation. The Tetra Tech will look at foam fractionation, foam fractionation process, and they'll take our results as part of their evaluation, but they're also evaluating other methodologies. So I just want that to be clear for everyone. And that's really the updates that I'm prepared tonight, unless there's any questions from any commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Matt, when you say treatment on the PFAS, you're essentially saying isolation and removal, correct? I mean, those processes, remove it, and then you treat it as a hazardous waste, as opposed to treating it and sending it into the, into the environment?
Not as a hazardous waste specifically, but essentially lowering the concentrations well over 95%.
But it actually removes it. My understanding, it actually removes that compound from-
It's not going to remove it 100% more than likely?
95% or whatever it is, right?
Almost, yes.
Okay, but, all right. And then the other thing, I've, I talked to Matt about it, and I talked to Jeff about it. I talked to some other people about it. Never mentioned it to Carrie. But we've got this, this solid waste management committee coming up, and I, Jenny Posey said in September, Carrie, we're looking at putting out a list of people to put on this committee. We've got a three-year rollout on state guidelines that are coming to the landfills for, you know, taking care of our environmental issues out there. So on recycling. So the question I had was, you know, Mr. Felix, after the election, I call the people that win. I call the people that don't win. And Mr. Felix is quite eager to get involved with the landfill and some of the issues. And then one of the things I shared, that you shared with me, Matt, was the July 19th additional NOV that came out from Eagle, the notice of violation by air quality. And I thought the response from, that you did was, was great because basically you told them it should be rescinded because there, the scrubber was, we're working with a new scrubber, give us a break, kind of a thing, and don't be so hard on us, right? And I talked to Bob Felix about that, and then, and he shared some different thoughts on how to deal with the regulators. And he basically is kind of volunteering to get involved with that. And I think you talked to him about it, is that correct? And so what I was thinking is if there's some way to, when the committee gets rolling out, is there some way, because there's a position for environmental interest group representative, you know, could we consider making an appointment for that now and let Mr. Felix do that? Or do we have to put it out for like public, you know, comment? Or could we do that to give him some credence or some ability to work with Matt with some authority, you know, connection to a county committee? Does that make any sense to anybody or not? Matt seemed to like it. I don't know. Mr. Felix liked it. I don't know if anyone else thinks it's good or bad. I-
I think if it gives Mr. Felix a head start, I can't see it down like that.
It's kind of what I thought. I don't know. Carrie, what do you think on that?
You know, the, the positions for this committee, per the statute, are very specific. I think there's a good chance we might struggle to find people to fill all of the different slots. So certainly, if anyone that's interested, you know, I would, we would put his name on the agenda with any other applicants we get for the board to decide.
Do you think it's a jump in the gun to try to do something to get him started on it? He's, he's got an interest in it. I think it was part of his reason he was elected, was the issues with landfill. It would seem to make sense to get him started on that, give him a, some, some connection to the county to be involved with Matt, other than just a citizen. I mean, I know Matt's communicating with him. I just threw that out there to see if, how people think. Did not check with Mr. Fletcher. He's here, if that's even appropriate, because he's commissioner-elect. He's not a commissioner. But an appointment as a citizen for that particular spot might give him the ability to deal with Eagle. Because in his, his career as an environmental engineer, he's been involved with, with the regulators, state regulators. He thought my approach to the state regulator was a bit harsh, to say the least. I got uninvited to a meeting with state regulators because of my position with the state regulators. So perhaps that's, you know, somebody like that might be helpful as another approach to that. So I just throwing it out there. If people, something we can do with it, I'd like to, I'd like- do with it, I'd like to, I'd like to do that.
I don't think it requires any action right now, right?
No, yeah, the board, it's the plan for you to take formal action next month to appoint the committee. You know, the committee has certain duties by statute that, to work on this materials management plan. I think some of, you know, what you're discussing is broader in scope, but certainly there would be nothing that would prohibit him from.
So we're actually going to make some appointments?
Meeting with Matt, sharing his ideas.
We might make some appointments in September, that would probably work.
Yes, that's the hope.
That's, that's perfect timing. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Any other question? Okay, so that was under the administrator's report? So do I have a motion and support to accept the administrator's report?
Vote to accept administrator's report.
Support.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 14, under miscellaneous business A, Mr. Winling.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for adding me to the agenda. I know I was here almost a month ago now, talking about a wage reclass for the employees in my office, and I appreciate the board adding me to the closed session today, but I wanted, and I, I know the board was party to some of the discussions between Corporation Counsel and Carrie and myself about whether I can be at this meeting or whether I can address this issue in an open board. I think it's appropriate that I do. It's not a collective bargaining issue. I feel that this is a true reclass issue, because I'm not advocating on behalf of any one employee, I'm advocating on behalf of my office, so I can be in a place where I can recruit and retain employees to carry out my constitutional function. My concern was, when this meeting came up and I asked again to be on the agenda, this whole process I've gone through of trying to get this issue before you as a board, multiple times I've been taken off your agenda when I wanted to present the board. I've been moved, and I've been told that it's not an appropriate issue, and I understand that Carrie has to, has to set the agenda for this board, but I'm an elected official too, and there is a process for reclassification that includes going to the board. If I was a department head, I would go to Carrie first, and then if I, and if she didn't agree with that, that wouldn't get to you. But as an elected official, I come to you as the board, and I'm asking for funding and asking for support for change within my office, and to be told that I'm just not going to be put on the agenda is frustrating. The reason I believe this to be important, that I address this point, I'm asking the board to keep this issue, my resolution and my request on your agenda, is because frankly it's been difficult to get here. And then secondly, I can go in that room and I can talk to you about labor relations, and I truly appreciate being invited to be part of that discussion as a co-employer, but I can't talk about a reclass in that room. That's not an appropriate purpose for a closed session, a reclass. A reclass should be brought here to the board by county policy. So I'm asking the board to consider both of those options. I had a true unique problem in my office, in that I'm down, was down, three and a half employees, now I'm down four and a half, because I had another lead today to work for a different county department for more money, 10% more money, for just a different department down the hall, and I felt that there was an inequity in the ability to be competitive to hire prosecutors to work for this county. And so that was my issue in approaching the board, and I think a reclassification, I thought this is a unique problem, I need to come up with a unique solution, and I did. I came up with a reclassification, I thought that was fair, I thought it was a good idea, I thought it was something that my budget could support without asking for additional money this year, because there really isn't a wage change for any employees this year, so it's not a wage issue that's outside of the bargaining unit. And secondly, it's an issue that I can cover in next year's budget based upon what I have, because frankly, I got five positions I can't fill. So I'm not getting applicants, I have a law school, they took the bar exam in July, and I need, I want to get the issue resolved sooner than later, because I have a whole new group of law students out there that will get their bar results in November. I have a court rule, I can bring them into my office now as a graduate of law school, I can have them work in the district court as if they were an attorney, and I, and it's a way in which I've hired most of the people that work for you in the county prosecutor's office, because they've been tested through that program. But if I don't have the tools to get them to come to my office, I can't move forward. So I wanted to keep the issue on the agenda, I wanted to keep it fresh, so that I won't come in here next month and say, hey, can we, can we deal with my resolution or my proposed resolution, then be told, no, you missed the deadline, you're not on the agenda this month, we're going to push you to next month, you need to apply in time. I'm like, wait a minute, I've been talking about this for months. So I'm asking, so I asked to be put on the agenda today to keep the issue fresh. I would like the board to vote on it. I know that there may be a resolution or there may be a different idea out there that I'm open to, but I just don't want to lose the opportunity to get this done in a time that it can actually be effective. So, and I also, there were questions that were asked, I think I've answered most of the questions. I sent out my material that I presented to the board, I have to apologize, because when the AV went on the screen, the voices didn't match the screen, and it was a little covered or it was a little echoed, so I did supply that or I did send that out to each commissioner. I hope that, if that brought any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just clarification, Mike, because there's been, there's nothing wrong with having discussion with department heads and elected officials about their management rights in their offices. So in your discussion and your approach to the board with this reclassification, the reason I supported the consideration of that was because I felt it was a management rights issue and it was not a collective bargaining as such. You are not a union, you are not a union representative, you're an elected official with co-employee status under the law, and I don't know if I'm right or wrong on the law on that, but that's where I came down. But just so I'm clear on this, I want to make sure, make a record that we were clear on this, as I've always told you, this board gives you a budget, this board has to provide funding to serviceability levels under the law, which we all know, and just because there's a reclassification, which would include some higher potential pay scales for people, that does not mean that this board is going to increase your budget any way, and you've acknowledged that, nor does it mean we've committed to do that in the future. So those will be discussions we have to have, but I do believe, I, I practice law in this county, I was a prosecutor for 20 years, I practiced law in Lefier County, Oakland County, you know, all over the place, and I know Sand Lake County has the same problem, they're down people, they can't get people to come to Sand Lake, they pay like 60 grand for, for a lawyer, you know, so of course no one's going to come. So I don't know how they're going to handle that problem, so I'm sensitive to your problem, but just, am I correct on that, Mike? We do understand that, you know, you want that reclassification so you can work within your budget, but attract people and retain people, and then we'll have discussions down the road about your level of funding and, and our whole budget as we go forward. Is that fair?
That's fair. And then, this isn't just a problem in my office, this is a problem Mike Millen's having in the district court, this is a problem that Mike Boucher's having in the public defender's office, and he's paying people $150 an hour contract. Like, the end result by saying no to every possible option to correct this problem isn't saving the county money, it's just making people go the other way, they have to hire contract lawyers, and they're, if they can find them, and I know Mike Boucher can't find any right now. So we're, we can't perform the service without the personnel, without, without a competitive pay scale, I don't think I can get the personnel. And I'd like to think that people are leaving, I mean, I, I ask them why they're leaving, they don't say it's because they hate me, or because they hate our office, or they don't like working for me. They say it's because of stress, because they're carrying on, there's 10 attorneys there now working in place of 15, and they say it's about money, and it's clearly, I, you know, I supplied the data that the money's in this region is completely different, whether you're on one side of county line or you're on the other side. And I get that this is a small county, and we're not as big as Macomb, we don't have the tax bases Oakland, but if we're talking about fixing the landfill and we're looking for an engineer, or we're talking about putting a roof on the county building and there were no roofers, we'd know we'd have to pay more to get a roofer here to fix the problem. And we may have, I'm advocating that we have to do that to keep lawyers in our county. That was it, unless anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Winling?
Just a comment.
Sure.
I believe this is an issue that does need to be addressed one way or the other, so I would like to have this addressed sooner rather than later, and each one of us get to vote on it, wherever the chips fall as they do, but it needs to be addressed, so rather than have this continually addressing this board, whether it's his office, the sheriff's office, some type of person that, we get something brought to us, let's take a vote on it and go forward with it, and we'll work with Carrie and the fundings that, that are required, but it needs to be addressed, so I'd like to definitely go forward.
Any other comments? No. Okay. Do we need a motion to, for miscellaneous business?
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Item 15.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support.
Thank you. Motion support? Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 16 and 17? Anybody have?
16, and we'll cover 17 also. I move to move into closed session for the purpose of discussing prosecuting attorney collective bargaining agreed, bargaining negotiation strategy and adjourn immediately thereafter.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion support? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned.